Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our official timekeeper, Mr. Barnes, says it's time. So I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Our commission chair, Mr. Rob Jones, is on a well-deserved vacation. So we look forward to him having a nice time and being back with us. If you would stand, I would like to ask this Tucker here? Yeah. Tucker's going to say our prayer today.
As let us pray, you're having a following thank you for the way you've given us. Will we ask for wisdom and guidance for this board, this county government? We would go forward in the way you would see fit. Will we ask for safety, safeguarding over our individuals' public safety? And men and women in the United States military? All this things we ask for your name.
Thanks Tucker. And if Mr. Jerry Barnes will lay the second pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and independence for all.
Okay, I see that we do have an amendment to the agenda. That is to add finance item A, 2018 audit presentation from Bates Carter &amp; Company. And we welcome Amanda Wilson with us tonight. We appreciate you being here. So I need, I'm going to make an emotion to approve the agenda. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We also have another one. We added old business item D, early retirement benefit option update. So sorry about that, we had to. I guess I need to get a second. I make a motion now. Thank you. All approved. Now we have a special time for our employee recognition. And John Nicholson has a special one for us tonight.
On behalf of the Pickens County Board of Commissioners, it's an honor to recognize Philip Dean as a Georgia Certified Emergency Manager.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We do not have a consent agenda tonight. So we'll move on to old business. The first thing is the Jones Mountain Road update. Johnny, would you give us, John Nicholson, would you give us a report?
The update, they finished driving what they call nails into the bank. It's squirting the caulk. It's in there, whatever. They should finish, they're going to put all the stones, stack in the stones to keep the mountain in place by the end of next week. And then they will, after the 4th of July, they will pave it, put the fence up, and finish taking. Everything's all scheduled as it is right now. It's July the 18th, they'll open it all up.
Wow, that's great.
That's including the paving, resurfacing of that area.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And next, we have economic development update. And Phil was in our meeting there. We appreciate that. And he's going to give us that update.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. I have a joint resolution in front of you to ask to sign. It's an amendment to the previously, previous resolution that you signed with the City of Jasper. And it does two things to that amendment. The first one is it resets the 120-day clock to begin on July 1st. And then the second one is based upon, after meeting with a consultant on Monday, it made more sense or it seemed more logical for the, for this same committee to also deal with guiding the development of the strategic plan. We were sure about the consultant that they could be done simultaneously and that the development of the plan would not in any way impair the timeline involved in naming the economic, or identifying the economic development.
Okay, so we need a move in a second to approve that. I move that we approve this. All in favor?
Yeah.
And the next item is the community center vending contract. After reviewing the contracts from Pepsi and Coke and looking at them closely, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract with Coke.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And the next thing is early retirement benefit option update. I promise you guys, we're trying. We are still meeting. We are still gathering information. And we're trying to find something that works, that the county can afford without having to raise the mileage rate. We have applied for more information and hoping to, I know we say two more weeks, but we're hoping to wrap this up within a couple of weeks. Midge is here on our committee and has done a good job. So wouldn't you say a couple of weeks we should be over?
I think so.
We're moving forward.
Right. Okay, thanks, Midge. Okay, let's see. Under new business, I'd like to ask Rodney Buckenhall to update us on the adoption of the tri-state zoning map.
Yes ma'am. Pickens County Planning and Development is charged with keeping a current zoning map on hand. And this map here refers to all zoning changes that have been adopted and put into our program through December 31st of last year. The planning commission has approved it. And we're looking for approval from the commissioners so that it will become the official map for Pickens County.
Am I right that we're required every year to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to bring in the new changes?
We'll be doing it again next year, yes ma'am.
Then I make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Rodney. The LNE, Phase 1 paving there. It's John Nicholson, if you'll give us that amendment.
We had five bidders when we opened this afternoon at 1:00. The lowest bid, Johnson Paving, that came in at $981,113.52. The next closest was $72,000 away. We have used Johnson Paving in the past and have had no problems whatsoever. So I recommend that we accept this.
And you studied, compared out the staffs?
Yeah, they all, had all their bonded airplanes.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve Johnson Paving for this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. And next up, we have a finance report. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Fay.
I'm going to give just a real brief report on May's, the May's information. The expenditure percentages should be less than 0.16%. The total expenditures through May for the general fund were $10,697,666. And that's 38.03%. So they are currently 3.6% under the budget amount. The line item budget reports for District District Department and elected officials on June 14th. And I have copies of those. If you are, if anyone can look at those. The revenues through the end of May total, $6,167,591. And that's 21.93%, which is normal for this year, for this time of the year. One thing I would like for, I'd like for you to look at is this request for amendment of the budget. And all this is, is recognizing revenues from insurance reimbursements for damaged property. And for the Sheriff's Office, it's $9,774. And for Plenty and Zoney, it's $6,290. And all that does is increase the revenue budget and also will be added to their expenditures so that they can pay for the repairs.
I make a motion that we accept those amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we have Amanda Wilson, our lead auditor. And she is going to present our audit information for, thank you, this year.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I am just here to briefly give you some highlights from the 2018 financial statements. Feel free to interrupt me as I go along if you have any questions. I also have time at the end if you want to go over anything that you might have wanted to go into more detail about. My name's Amanda Wilson. I'm the Audit Manager at Bates Carter. And I've been, I've had the pleasure of working on this, on this county since we started working with you guys seven years ago. So pleased to be here. And let me just give you some of the highlights. So my first slide is just going to talk about the audit reports that are actually included in the financial statements. So everyone always wants to know what the audit report is. And the auditor's report is reflecting an unmodified opinion, which just states that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the highest opinion that you can get on your financial statements. There is another report that is also included with your financial packet. And that is a report that is internal controls and compliance. And this, this report requires that as part of the audit, we also review internal controls and make sure that there are no significant deficiencies that exist. We, again, don't have many issues that have existed in that report. There is one issue that's outstanding. And we can go into further detail with that as we like. But for the most part, we haven't had any experience, any troubles with what we've had to do for this year. So what is included in your financial statements as they're presented? We are going to include all of the departments that belong to the county in the general fund. We have all funds that are a part of the county and the elected officials offices. We're also including the Development Authority, which we include as part of our audit. And then we relied on another auditor's report for the Department of Public Health that's a part of the county's financial statements. So I'm just going to touch on some highlights from some of the general fund and the other larger funds of the county. Again, if I'm going too fast, feel free to interrupt me. Overall, revenues exceeded expenditures in 2018 by $355,000. So revenues exceeded expenditures, that's a great thing. Revenues increased 2% from prior year. That's good steady growth. That's about the increase that we had seen from 2016, 2017 to 2017, 2018. So my slide here shows other signs of good steady growth. Property taxes increased by $900,000. That is in, in spite of the fact that the mortgage rates decreased. So the increase in the property tax is due to new growth and the fact that Pickens County is expanding. Sales taxes also increased, which is another way of being able to mark the meter that your growth is something that's having to do with increase of county. If your property taxes are increasing, and so is your sales tax, that's usually indicative of growth as, for the county side. I confirmed the Census Bureau. I think that they had measured from April 2010 to April 2019. And they have Pickens County population growth at about 8.7%. So there's good steady manageable growth that's currently happening. And you're seeing that in your near to near financial statements. The, as far as the revenue is concerned, these are also revenue items that have had some major changes from the previous year. But they're not necessarily indicative of anything that has to do with growth. Capital lease proceeds just have to do with what the county has managed and decided to do. So currently, the capital lease proceeds increased $218,000 from the prior year. And that's in relation to the addition of new annuities to the public safety fleet. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental grants decreased by $700,000. But that is just a timing issue. That's because you received two LNE receipts in one year in 2017. Your annual awards are remaining consistent. So this is just timing of receipt of revenue. The actual awards are maintaining consistency. There is also a private contribution that also had to do with the new annuities that were added to the fee this year. So when you look at the revenues to the budget, revenues were under the final budget by $800,000. And most of that didn't have to do with how the county is managing their revenue sources that are coming in from people that are giving money to the county. Most of this had to do with the capital lease proceeds, which again are, that's a managed part from the commissioners. The intergovernmentals were under budget, but that is also related to grants and other functions. And charges for services were under budget by $520,000. But this is mostly due to the termination mid-year of a contract with Sandy Springs for prisoner housing. This may come back. And so it's just that there was not an adjustment that happens when that revenue stream stopped mid-year. So expenditures increased by $355,000 compared to 2017. But if you look at that, that's only a 3% increase in expenditures. You compare that to the 2% increase in revenues, you're really growing at a marked rate for both revenues and expenditures. There's nothing that's exceptionally out of line. Overall, your expenditures are lower than your budget. And this is somewhat due to some positions that were included in the budget at the beginning of the year that were not filled during 2018. But another part of it is the fact that department, department-wide throughout the county, departments are maintaining their budget, they're actively managing it. And most departments fell well with under their budget at the end of the year. This graph shows the revenues and expenditures from year to year and how they compare to each other. Again, you're seeing growth in your fund balance because revenues have exceeded expenditures for the last few years. You've come a little bit closer in line in the last year or two, but there's nothing to worry about there. Your revenues are exceeding your expenditures and your, within your budget. This is good steady growth up the, up in your fund balance. This is also going to show you the percentage of your fund balance that's unrestricted or unassigned. The GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that a good rule of thumb is that this percentage should be at least 25%. And as you can see, at 2018, the ending percentage was just about 36%. So this shows that your, your fund balance is in a healthy position for the general fund. So I'm just going to talk about some of the other funds besides the general fund and hit some of the highlights. The SPOS Fund collected $4.9 million in revenues in 2018 and spent $6.2 million. Your money is going to be approved projects that are on the SPOS referendum. And so this is, again, the normal procedures that you have already approved. The debt that's associated with the county, this is on your governmental activities report. Long-term debt for the entire county is $751,000. This is, this is a low balance for a county of your size. It means that you're actively using your, your debt as a resource and you're not pushing your resources. Currently, the only debt to the county is notes payable related to the community center, which will mature next year. And capital dis, this year, the next, after the audited period. And capital leases that are $716,000, that will mature between 2019, 2021. So again, not only do you not have a lot of debt, they're coming to completion in the next few years. The business-type activities for your water fund, the operating income was $255,000, which includes the depreciation cost of $661,000. Having your water fund be able to cover the cost of its depreciation means that it can adequately fund the cost of these assets as they depreciate and as you need to add to the infrastructure of the fund. So this is a good sign. This income does not include the fact that debt service payments have also been paid out of this fund in the amount of $526,000. The debt that's associated with the water fund is $7.8 million, mostly due to a bond payable. That has to do with increasing the infrastructure with an interest rate of 2.35%, which is a good interest rate. And it matures in 2029. There's also a note payable for $1.6 million to, for a water treatment plant and then a small amount of capital leases. So the long-term debts associated with this fund are related to increasing the infrastructure and the life of the, of the fund itself. So it's, it's in a good situation as well. Touching briefly on the airport fund, there's an operating loss of $84,000, which is similar to its activity from the prior year. It has also included the cost of its depreciation. It just couldn't withstand it as well as the water fund did. The depreciation cost from the airport authority for 2018 was $101,000. But they also have made debt service payments as well in that amount. And that's not included in that amount. And the debt that's included in the airport fund is long-term debt of $4.4 million, which is made up of bonds that are related to the aircraft hangars and to the, the new tax rate construction. Just to bring some other issues to your attention as far as the liabilities of the county are concerned. The net pension liability as of 12/31 was $7.1 million. As to be expected, it was a comparable value at the end of last year. It's being funded correctly. The net OPEB liability is reported differently this year. So there was an implementation and a change in accounting principle that you'll see in your financial statements. This change in how we're reporting the liability actually reduced the OPEB liability by $815,000. It's still a liability that is to the county. We're relying on actuarial valuations to get that liability. So the fact that it changed its value is really because of how it's reported. So those are the highlights from the 2018 audit report. Do you have any questions on it?
It looks great to me. I do have a question. I'm sure you audit other counties. How do we compare to like counties our size?
As far as?
Financial strength, how we're doing?
You do very well. Specifically, one of the things that sets you apart is the small amount of debt that the county is covering. So when you look at the debt that this county is associated with, you don't necessarily include OPEB or net pension liability because those are, those are without your control. If you are properly, properly funding them, that is the point that you are able to control them. So making your payments every year, looking to the future to make sure that as those payments might expand, as you have employees that are retiring, that you'd be able to cover that. That's the, that's the amount of control that you have over that. I think that we mentioned last year when we gave the presentation that the, the position of the amount of debt that's related to bonds and to notes and to capital leases is significantly less than other counties. So that, that is a sign of good management. You're also experiencing good managed growth. So the fact that the budgets are being well, well paid attention to and you're fallen within them has been allowing your fund balance to grow from year to year. And that's always something that needs to be considered. It's not just about balancing the budget. It's about also making sure that you have resources in the case that you might need them in the OPEB. And the, the costs for retired employees are only going to continue to increase. So having that fund balance continue to grow is a, a very good asset to the county.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'd like to thank Fay and everybody else that's in the finance department and the other departments throughout the county. Going through an audit is a six-month process and it's very arduous. And everyone in this county has always been receptive and welcoming. So I want to say thank you for that. And I look forward to seeing you guys again.
And I want to thank Ms. Harvey as well. She does a fabulous job. We're blessed with that. And Connie, yes, at the same. Thank you so much. And you're ready for the sale or whatever you choose. Okay. Now, okay. We need to approve the minutes. We had a meeting on May 16, 2019. Did you look over these?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve those meetings.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Okay, and also a work session on June 6, 2019. Does that look okay? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve that work session.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. Thank you. Now we get down to some rezon request. We actually, the first one we have was Zachary, Alord, and Chase. Alord, and this is at 230 Old Mill White Extension, 6.17 acres. This one, it was voted, it went before the Planning and Development Office. And it was voted 3 to 2 to not approve the rezon request. If it's okay with Mr. Barnes, I would like to put this particular one on hold and vote on that when all through commissioners appear.
Totally.
Totally. Okay, thank you. All right, so the next one we have. The next one is the planning, the Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on March 29, 2019 from Al Lawson requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to highway business on 4.1 acres located at 1182 Tuckin Rock Road, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is to construct a 200-unit enclosed storage facility. This would be climate-controlled and covered RV and boat storage at the back. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and the public, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted 6 yes and 0 no to approve the rezon request on the 4.1 acre parcel contained on tax map parcel, tax map parcel JA 02024. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for your review and decision. After reviewing it, I make a motion that we approve. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's been approved. And then the next one is a request for change in land use classification. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on April 2, 2019 from H. Michael Gray requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to rural residential on 9.694 acres located at Bradley Road, Tuckin Rock, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is to have large lots for single-family homes for small families priced at a reasonable price. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and Teddy Colley inquiring in regards to the number of lots, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted 5 yes and 0 no to approve the rezon request on the 9.694 acre parcel contained on tax map parcel 033150002. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to Board of Commissioners for your review and decision. What's your position?
I'm making a little reception.
And I second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's been approved.
You can go home now.
Or you can stay, we're having fun. Okay, let's see. All right, the next one is a request for change in land use classification. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on April 22, 2019 from P. Kelly Williams requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to rural residential on 8.36 acres located on Cardinal Road, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is to divide the property into four individual lots. One for Ms. Williams and one for each of her two sons and one for Mr. Noah, her brother, so they could live in close proximity to each other. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to testimony from both the applicant and with no public input, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted 5 yes and 0 no to approve the rezon request on the 8.36 acre parcel contained on tax map parcel 065058001. And the Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for your review and decision. I second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's been approved. And the next one. And the next one is a request for change in land use classification. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on April 25, 2019, from Marie Hyde CJM Services LLC requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to suburban residential on 1.33 acres located at 30 Hyde Park Road, Georgia, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is for Ms. Hyde's company CJM Services LLC to rezon the property with a single-family rental home to suburban residential in the event that the home will need to be refinanced or sold at a later date with a need for refinancing. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and with no public input, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on the 1.33 acre parcel contained on map parcel number 021C043002. The Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for your review and decision.
I agree. Sound their recommendation?
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's been approved. And the next one is a request for change in land use classification. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on April 25, 2019, from Marie Hyde requesting a change in the land use classification of highway business to suburban residential on 1.22 acres located at Hyde Park Road, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is for Ms. Hyde's company Realty Group of North Georgia LLC to build a single-family house on Lot 3 for resale. And after reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and with no public input, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on the 1.22 acre parcel contained on map parcel 021C043. So that's been approved. And the last one, it looks like, a request for change in land use classification. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on May 2, 2019, from Dusty Eaton requesting a change in the land use classification of agricultural to suburban residential on 3.24 acres located at Highway 136 Connector, Tuckin Rock, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, is to split the 3.24 acres from a 38.4 acre tract and divide the property into three lots for the purpose of building three homes to sell. Okay. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and with no public input, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on the 3.24 acre parcel contained on tax map parcel 018026 to be split out of a 38.4 acre tract. So that's been approved. All right. I think that's kind of...
Yeah. My wife says I'm...
Did I miss one?
I was just wanting to go, what was the vote total on the last two?
The last two?
Yeah. I mean, all out, from the Commissioners.
Yeah, I'm going to go with the last two, babe. Ms. Hyde's second request and that, yes.
Yes.
And you want to make a motion?
I'm accepting it.
And I second it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Ms. Hyde's...
Give it change, that's all I want.
Yeah. And then the last one.
I'm accepting it, too.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That, that got over a rezon request, and that's what we need, so I think now we go to, we go to yes comments. Does anybody here have a comment? Any questions, any comments? Everybody's happy tonight?
You can tell me if I open my mouth, you wouldn't vote for it.
Never, never. Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, and this meeting is adjourned.